Lisa, are we good with the TV channel?
It looks like we are ready to go on my end, so if you are ready to go on your end, we can go ahead and open up the meeting.
All right, I will bring the meeting of the San Carlos Planning Commission of March 1st, 2021 to order. We begin each meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the states of America and to the republic for which it stands. Next on our agenda is the roll call, and before Lisa takes the role, I'd like to take just a minute and welcome our newest member, Kristin Clements, to the Planning Commission. Kristin, it's great to have you onboard. And before I turn it over to other commissioners to have them make welcoming comments, I'll just say that it's a very exciting time for the Planning Commission, and it's just wonderful that you're a part of the commission. Welcome.
Thank you, Alan, and thank you all. I'm very happy to be here. I look forward to working with you all.
I'll jump in and say my welcome as well. Really great to have you on, and it's background that you bring will certainly be an asset in our deliberations, and we can do good things for the city of San Carlos. So, welcome.
John here. Welcome, Kristin. Nice to have you. We look forward to working for you, and I always say we're not just the city of good living, we're the city of good government. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Chris and Jim here could do put a face to the name. Welcome to this group. We'll look forward, as everyone has said, to having your great experience and perspective. Join us as we help our city grow and develop and thrive for the future.
You're kind. Thank you. Happy to be here.
All right, and with that, Lisa, may I have a roll call?
Absolutely, and on behalf of staff, welcome, Kristin. It's great to have you join us. Okay, Commissioner Yakaponi.
Here.
Commissioner Clements.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Vice Chair Ruth.
Here.
And Chair Garvey.
Present.
All right, the next item on the agenda is public comment. I want to take a brief moment now to describe the public comment item. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention, or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone in the waiting room who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? I don't hear anyone. I'll give it another 10 to 13 seconds just to see if anybody wants to call in. All right, moving on. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the Planning Commission's meeting of December 21st, 2020. Is there... Does anyone have any changes to the minutes? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Yes.
Commissioner Clements.
I abstain, as I was not at that meeting.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ruth.
Yes.
And Chair Garvey.
Yes.
All right, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing. I'm going to read the procedure now for the public hearing. Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed, and no further discussion on the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers will be called upon by the last three digits of their phone number and should state their name prior to addressing the commission. This will assist staff in preparing the minutes. Our public hearing tonight is 977 Laurel Street, APN 051358270. Request for a conditional use permit and an amendment to the below-market-rate housing plan to allow for the conversion of an existing eight-unit mixed-use development from rental to for sale condominiums. Does staff have a presentation this evening?
Yes, thank you. Lisa Costa-Sanders, Principal Planner. I'll be giving the staff presentation with other staff members as well. Can you advance the slide, Lisa? Thank you. The subject site is just over 6,000 square feet in area and is located along Laurel Street between Arroyo and Morris. The site is currently developed with a four-story mixed-use development and is located in the mixed-use downtown core zoning district. The Planning Commission approved design review, conditional use permit, and a below-market-rate housing plan for the mixed-use development in 2015. The four-story building includes ground-floor commercial space, seven market-rate units, and one very low-income unit. The unit mix includes four one-bedroom units, three two-bedroom units, and a three-bedroom unit. The very low-income unit is a one-bedroom unit. Construction of the building was completed in 2017. The applicant requests Planning Commission approval to allow conversion from rental housing to for-stall housing and an amendment to the below-market-rate housing agreement. Conversion to condominium housing is regulated under the city's subdivision ordinance, San Carlos Municipal Code Chapter 17.48, and General Plan Policy LU 9-20. This is an important policy decision before the Planning Commission, as the city has not considered a condominium conversion request in at least the last 30 years, and we anticipate several projects to follow should this application be granted. There are several findings that the Planning Commission is required to make to approve the request. Staff finds that a majority of these findings can be met or has agreed to defer the submittal pending this decision. That includes the tentative parcel map that would be deferred pending the decision on the condominium conversion. The project does comply with the zoning code Title 18. CCNRs have been submitted in compliance with the code. No design improvements are proposed at this time. If they were, they would be required to be included on the ten if not. San Carlos Municipal Code cites the State Department of Finance Statistics for purpose of determining the city's vacancy rate or a vacancy rate survey. The State Department of Finance Statistics reports that San Carlos' rental vacancy rate at 3.1% as of 2018, which is the most recent data available. The applicant submitted a vacancy survey that found 11.47% vacancy rate as of October of 2020. The survey found 79 vacant units out of 689 units reported in 38 apartment buildings. Staff has some concern with the applicant-provided survey, as the data did not report on any fully occupied buildings. It may skew a bit towards unoccupied units. The reported vacancy rate may also be due to the current market conditions resulting from the impact of COVID-19 pandemic, where we are seeing more renters that are impacted than homeowners. The reported vacancy rate may, as a result, reflect these temporary market conditions and not be an indicator of a surplus of apartment units in the community. Regardless, if we were to assume the current vacancy rate in San Carlos does exceed the 5% requirement, we then need to consider additional factors that are specified in the code. Go to the next slide. Thank you. San Carlos Municipal Code requires the Planning Commission to consider the following factors in determining whether to approve economy and conversion is in the best interest of the community. The impact of proposed conversion on the existing apartment housing supply, the ratio of the number of residential condominium units available to the number of apartment units available, the affordability level of both rental and purchase units in relation to the current needs of the community, and we'll walk through each of these factors. In response from a question from a Planning Commissioner, staff researched the percentage of rental units in surrounding communities. This data is from 2019. As you can see, San Carlos has a lower percentage of rental units when compared to other jurisdictions. San Carlos is at 27%. The next jurisdiction closest to us would be Benoit at 39%, and then you see the range going up to Mountain View at 58% rental. Factors one and two require the commission to consider the impact of the proposed residential conversion on the housing supply and the ratio on the number of residential condominium units available to the number of apartment units available. We do not currently have data on the exact breakdown of how many rental units are apartments versus condominium units, but we do know that 27% of the housing stock in San Carlos is rental units, which is one of the lower percentages in San Mateo County, and the project will reduce the apartment housing supply by eight units. Next slide. Thank you. We are seeing a substantial market trend towards building ownership units in San Carlos. Projects recently approved or under review are predominantly condominium developments. The city recently approved, but has not yet been constructed, 167 new housing units, only 33 of which are apartments. Of the apartment units, 24 are within a below-market-rate housing development at 817 Walnut, which is cosponsored by the city and not market-driven. Other projects that are currently under review and not yet approved are all proposed as ownership developments. As there are very few new rental developments in the pipeline, it is important to preserve the existing rental housing stock. Factor three requires the Planning Commission to consider the affordability level of both rental and purchase units in relation to the current needs of the community. San Carlos' median home price in August of 2020 was $1.97 million, and the average rental rate is $2,182. That rental rate translates to a home valued at around $500,000. So generally, apartment units provide a more affordable housing opportunity than ownership units. A greater inventory of apartment units also tends to result in lower rental rates overall compared to a market with fewer apartments. I'm now going to turn it over to Adam Aronson, Acting Economic Development and Housing Manager, and he'll discuss the below-market-rate housing plan request. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. To begin with, this project, the Planning Commission approved the BMR plan in 2015. It required one one-bedroom rental unit as affordable to very low-income units with a term of 55 years on the project. It also, in the BMR plan, prohibits the owner from converting the BMR unit to a condominium unit in Section 2.3. Should also note that the project qualified for a density bonus of one additional unit as it provided a very low-income unit. Next slide, please. The applicant has requested an amendment to the BMR housing plan under one of the following alternatives. They could offer the unit for sale to the current BMR LSE to purchase, or continue to rent to the current LSE and then sell as a BMR unit after the current LSE vacates the unit on their own accord. And the applicant has also indicated a willingness to continue to rent as a BMR unit for the full 55-year term of the agreement. Next slide, please. To provide a little more information on the existing BMR unit, the rental rate for this year is currently restricted to $1,193 a month, including utilities. That number does change each year as the area median income increases. The maximum qualifying household income for that unit for a single person is $60,900. For two people, it goes up to $69,000, and then for three people, it goes up to $78,000. If the property, if the unit was converted to a condominium unit, we've estimated that the sale price would be about $135,000. This does depend on what the HOA fees are and could go up or down slightly. Staff recommends denial of the applicant's request to amend the BMR plan as we don't find that the amendment is superior to the currently approved BMR plan. We also currently have over 3,000 interested persons on the city's BMR waitlist, and we've found that it's difficult to qualify very-low-income purchasers in comparison to very-low-income renters. Typically, very-low-income purchasers have a, very-low-income households have a harder time coming up with the down payment for a purchase unit and also managing the HOA fees, which the city does not have any control over. Now, with that, I will turn it back to Lisa.
Thank you. Staff did send the required public notice was mailed to our property owners within 300 feet of the site of February 17th and published in the newspaper on February 18th. We have not received any comments on the project to date. Staff recommends denial at the application as the condominium conversion is not in the best interest of the community as it would reduce the already-limited rental housing inventory. Should the commission find the request is in the best interest of the community, it is required to make all the required findings in the affirmative. And if that was the case, staff would recommend that the BMR unit be retained as an affordable rental unit as indicated that the applicant would be willing to do for the original term of the agreement. And the next slide has the motion, should you choose to make a decision at this evening's meeting. I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions, and I know the applicant team is also here this evening to present to you as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. That was an excellent presentation. Do any of my colleagues have any clarifying questions of staff before we ask the applicant to come forward and make their presentation?
I do.
Yes, Commissioner Clements, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. The vacancy rate calculation, what percentage of apartments were surveyed by the applicant's consultant? And so, and do we, do we know what kind of class of apartments that they were? I assume that this conversion would result in a new Class A apartment, and so really comparing, you know, very old apartments, lower-class apartments, and their vacancy rates probably not as germane as Class A apartments.
Sure, so I can have the applicant expand on that, but they did contact property managers, landlords, and owners of over 1,000 units in San Carlos, and 30% of the contacts led to either no information or refusal to give information. So they got a survey size of 689 units, which is about 19 to 22% of the overall market rate. But I do not know, like your question asked, what that class of units reflected, so I would defer to the applicant for that.
Any other questions before we ask the applicant to come forward?
Could I ask one more clarifying question? The, I think the staff presentation said that we assume that the sales price would be $135,000 as an ownership unit. Is that what I read?
That's correct. And as Mr. Aronson indicated, that's going to vary depending on the homeowner association due amount, and then the area median income at the time the unit is available for sale.
So the HOA is taken into the price calculation?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, hearing no further questions, I'll ask the applicant and their team to come forward. Whoever the lead is, I, we typically give the team 10 minutes, and you can use that 10 minutes amongst your team in whatever way you would like.
Let Ron start, if he's on here. Well, seeing as I think he's having issues. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Ron Grove has his hand up, so he's waiting to be let in.
He seems to be unmuted.
Ron, you can start.
Yeah, my name is Ron Grove. I'm the owner and applicant for 977 Laurel. I want to thank everybody involved in the process, and I want to thank the commissioners for taking the time to review our proposal. I purchased 977 Laurel with plans and permits approved in 2017. We built and completed the units in early 2019. In January of 2020, I started the application process for the condo conversion. I started this process before the COVID pandemic started. It was not a decision based on COVID. Fast forward to last Wednesday afternoon, Planner Lisa Costa-Sanders informed me that planning was not supporting my request. Thirteen months of process and countless emails, I was quite surprised and disappointed. At this time, I'm going to hand over the meeting to Andy Klein. I'm available for any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Planning Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Andy Klein, and I'm the Director of Property Management at Sequoia Realty Services, where Mr. Grove is one of our clients. I was also raised in San Carlos, served on the General Plan Committee, and was elected to the City Council well over 10 years ago. I'm here tonight to discuss the staff findings regarding the condo conversion at 977 Laurel Street. My role tonight is to go over these findings and to show you that these were made in error, and the findings should actually lead you to approve this project, not to deny. Next slide, or is that on me? With this application, the staff has made three findings that have led them to recommend denial of this project. The first is that they do not support removing the below-market rental from the rental inventory, do not want the owner to convert it to a below-market sale unit. The second finding is the vacancy rate of 3.1% does not support conversion, and that this current rental economy is temporary. Lastly, staff has found that this condo conversion is not in the best interest of the city, and that removing these units from the rental market would be adverse to the community. Next slide, please. Let's take each of these one at a time. I have a huge slide here for the sake of time. I'm going to boil it down to this. Numerous times, the applicant has told the city of San Carlos that he was willing to do whatever the city of San Carlos wanted with the BMR. He's offered to keep it as a rental, so it remains in the rental inventory for very low income. We've never been given direction by the city. In a February 1 Zoom call with Lisa Costa-Sanders, we asked her specifically, what would the city prefer? And we were told, I don't know. So we threw a couple options out there. The applicant is unequivocally saying, no, we're happy to keep this as a below-market rental unit, and so it remains in the rental inventory. Or we're happy to do it as a for-sale unit. Whatever the city would prefer, the applicant is willing to do. Next slide. Next, city staff is stating the vacancy rate is 3.1%. As stated, this is information from 2018. They have questioned our numbers a little bit, but seem to be fine using numbers that are years-old and reflect a very different housing economy. Our study of 689 units showed 79 vacancies. It would only take 92 out of the remaining 2,730 units to hit that 5% number. The city staff has argued that our survey is insufficient, but we were not told this until the day before the package was released. Had we been, we would have happily gone back up and done another survey to hit the markers that the city of San Carlos would like us to hit. To answer Commissioner Clements' question, when it comes to Class A, there's not a lot of Class A apartment buildings in San Carlos because not a lot of apartment buildings have been built in the past 20 years. The one that's comparable is the Tressel Apartments on El Camino. That is currently at a 10.8% vacancy rate. Next slide, please. The largest indicator outside of the data we provided showing a growing vacancy rate is price. A housing market with a vacancy rate under 5% is considered to be tight. The recent increases in rents and construction of new rental housing in San Mateo County are indicative of the high demand for rental housing relative to the supply of available rental units. This quote is essentially freshman-level microeconomics. If the supply of an item scares, prices rise. This quote actually comes from the current San Carlos Housing Element, which governs housing policy until 2023. The quote is saying, under 5% vacancy rate equals rising prices, so therefore falling prices would be indicative of vacancy rate over 5%. Next slide, please. Apartment prices have and continue to drop up and down the peninsula. Here are two recent quotes taken from local newspapers. No matter what, I don't think that we're at the bottom yet. Prices will continue to decrease. That's Resumper Analysis, Neil Gurrenstein, January 2021. In October 2020, the city of San Mateo showed a 3.7% dip from the previous month and an 11.9% drop in prices from the previous year. That was in October 5, 2020 Daily Journal. Both of these are more relevant than a study done in 2018. Next slide, please. Here are some real price examples from San Carlos that are as old as Friday and as most recent as today. Tressel Apartments, the Class A building in town, is giving two months free rent, which is indicative of a 16% price drop. It does not include that they've lowered their asking prices as well. 1500 Laurel Street, which is a building that was built in 2001, has price drops of 18 to 20%, depending on the floor plan of the unit, whether it's a junior one-bedroom, a one-bedroom, or a two-bedroom. 6A1 Cedar Street, which is a home or an apartment built in 1965, which is more indicative of the apartments we have here in San Carlos, it shows a 22% price drop. Just the drops in the asking price alone show a major reset for rental pricing, but the additional required free rent makes these drops so much more severe. This also does not take into account tenants asking for smaller deposits and additional concessions. I use these three buildings to represent a wide range of multifamily buildings in San Carlos with different age of construction, location, size, and amenities. All of them show larger than 15% price drops from January 2020 to now. Next slide, please. If the vacancy rate is the same as January 2020, which is when we reported that number by staff, or 2018, and staff is now saying, why are prices dropping so dramatic? If the vacancy rate is the same, why do you see so many for lease signs around town? If the vacancy rate is the same, why are all the newspapers reporting about people fleeing the Bay Area? Well, the answer is simple. The vacancy rate is not the same. It is significantly higher than being reported by the city staff. The evidence confirms a vacancy rate of higher than 5%. Next slide, please. The staff is also saying that this is a temporary economy. No one actually knows that. The economy was slipping into a recession in February 2020 before the pandemic even struck. We just experienced the longest period of economic growth in our lifetimes. It is safe to assume an economic downturn of some length will fall. We also do not know if the vaccine will cure the economy. Many employers like HP and Oracle have moved their headquarters out of the Bay Area, and others like Salesforce, Twitter, Facebook, Dropbox, Slack, Spotify, Square, just to name a few, will allow employees to work from home 50% to all of the time. Many other companies are going to work from home forever. These are major employers in our region. If just 10% of office jobs go to some version of work from home, or more companies move out of the area, that would have a major impact on the demand from housing in our region. City council members up and down the peninsula, including here in San City council members up and down the peninsula, including here in San Carlos, are questioning and pushing back on the state's regional housing needs assessment numbers. They are saying that the state needs to recalculate based on new work-from-home economy. The policymakers of our local communities are saying the demand for housing has dropped and will not come back to the levels it was at. So the state should require them to build less housing. The San Mateo County Tax Assessor's Office has sent out letters to multifamily owners who have purchased their property in the past five years, letting them know they are probably eligible for a property tax reduction due to increased vacancy rate and falling rental prices. We provided the city with a copy of this letter for nine seventy-seven Laurel Street. City staff did not include this letter in your packet, nor were they aware the county was doing this. So no one knows what the future holds, but the local policymakers are saying the change is big enough that it will impact demand for housing in the future. The county is saying the change is big enough that properties are now overvalued and is willing to look at adjusting tax rates. But the City of San Carlos is saying, is the only jurisdiction saying that this is temporary and everything will go back to normal. Next slide, please. Even if it was temporary, which is a pretty big leap to get to, there is nothing in the code that says the vacancy rate has to be over five percent for any period of time. It can be easily argued the vacancy rate has been over five percent for three quarters or more, but the code just says the vacancy rate needs to be above five percent. The vacancy rate was above five percent when the project was submitted and it still is. Next slide. Is the condo conversion in the best interest of the community? The code says Planning Commissioners shall consider the following factors. The impact of proposed residential conversion on the existing apartment housing supply. The impact would be negligible. The amount of units we are talking about amounts to two tenths of one percent. Also, none of them outside of the BMR unit are considered affordable. The median cost of an apartment in San Carlos is twenty-one hundred dollars per the city. This means that the lowest-priced unit at nine seventy-seven Laurel Street is fifty percent more expensive than the median apartment cost. That is just the least expensive. They go up to double and quadruple the amount of the median apartment pricing. These are luxury apartments. Two, the Planning Commission shall consider the ratio of the number of residential condominium units available to the number of apartment units. There are currently twenty to thirty condos available in the City of San Carlos. None of them cheaper than nine hundred and forty thousand, most falling in the range of one million to one point five. There are over a hundred and fifty apartment units available in the city. There's a minimum ratio of one condo for every five apartments. The two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-three housing element does not call for ratio of homes to rentals, nor does it incentivize one or the other. The largest amount of condos for sale in the City of San Carlos are in Wheeler Plaza. That is a development that the city partnered with the developer to build at-market condominiums. So while the city talks about rental housing, when given the opportunity to build at-market, the city built condos. Next slide, please. The Planning Commissioner shall consider the affordability level of both rental and purchase units in relation to the current needs of the community. These are seven luxury apartments and a BMR unit. All seven of the apartments range from fifty percent more than the median price of an apartment up to four times as much as the median price. The housing element calls for more affordable housing, not more luxury apartments. However, if they are converted to for-sale apartments, six of the seven condos would be below the median price of a home in San Carlos. If you look at this chart, the blue properties are what is currently for sale in San Carlos on Zillow today. The red ones are where the nine seventy-seven Laurel units will fall in pricing. This is based on a price of one thousand to one thousand fifty-three dollars per square foot, which is comparable to other downtown condos. Six of the seven units would fall beneath the median home price of one point nine million dollars. Three of the units would be under nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, which was the median price of homes in two thousand and five. And these would be the least expensive homes on the market today. So the question is, does the commission value luxury apartments over affordable condos? I don't think you do, and I do not believe the residents nor the city council do either. How many times have we heard city council members say they want their kids to afford to live here? This is how. Units like this provide first-time home buyers an opportunity to enter our community, build equity and make their way up to their forever homes. This is the type of housing we should be in. Next slide. This debate does bring up a lot of policy issues that the City of San Carlos and its elected representatives should have now and in the future. There's no policy stating San Carlos should have a certain percentage of rental housing. City staff in our discussions alluded to a needed ratio, but was unwilling to confirm what that is. The reason they cannot is our community does not have one and city staff cannot create a policy without the city council weighing in. In the report, it also states, and I quote, "The decision to grant a condominium conversion is an important policy decision before the Planning Commission, as it will likely result in additional requests in the near future. It may result in a shift in the rental and ownership market in San Carlos." This quote is very problematic for many reasons. One, it negates to tell the Planning Commission how difficult a condo conversion actually is and how many rental properties would be ineligible due to their age and the way they're built. Two, more importantly, it stresses that the commission should be wary of this request due to setting a precedent. The code never calls for or says the commission shall consider future implications of approving a project that meet the threshold for approval. The reason it does not do this is because the precedent that would be set is that the city would begin denying requests that conform to the code that was set by the policymakers of San Carlos, which is the city council. These discussions about ratios and conversions are important discussions to have. We have them every eight to ten years when the housing element is approved. The current housing element runs until two thousand twenty-three. Staff has made reference to the next housing element, which has not been approved nor reviewed by the Planning Commission or the City Council. Until it is approved by both and ratified by the state, we shall and must operate on the current housing element, the current municipal power. That code does not make a preference between rental or for-sale, just between affordable and not affordable. Next slide. In conclusion, this project meets all the requirements for approval and therefore should be approved by the San Carlos Planning Commission. We have agreed to keep the BMR unit a rental if the city so desires. We have shown the vacancy rate is well over five percent and we've also demonstrated how this conversion is in the best interest of the community. Debates about housing policy and future conversions should be scheduled for discussion at a future date with the elected parties, but have no bearing on this application. We ask that you approve this application tonight and we are now available for any questions that the commission may have.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Klein. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any questions of Mr. Klein, Mr. Grove or staff before we open it up to the public and see if there's anyone who would like to comment?
Maybe this is too personal, but did you build, get approval and build this building with the intent of converting to condos at a later date?
We built the building with the option to convert to condos if the market desired that.
Thank you.
I have a question. Thank you for the presentation and the survey. I'm interested in the methodology a little, even though I have other concerns about the applicability of the survey, but the survey itself. What was the method used to select which apartments, buildings would be surveyed? If only particular types of buildings were surveyed that could push the results in one direction or another?
So the methodology was actually to cast a wide net. We wanted a survey that was indicative of the housing in San Carlos and that's why it ranges from Class A to Class C. Again, there's not a lot of Class A in San Carlos, but it also varies geographically. You have certain pockets of apartment complexes in San Carlos. We have some up in the hills by Highland Park, a lot down in the flats, some north of San Carlos Avenue, but the majority south. So what we did was we tried to capture as good of a snapshot of the community as we could. Vacancy rate surveys are very hard for a variety of reasons. A lot of mom and pops manage the buildings themselves. Their information is not readily attainable outside of like a mailing address, so it's really hard to get a response. So primarily, we went with property managers and landlords and owners who we know and are available for context. And then we also scoured Zoom, or sorry, Zillow, Craigslist, all the other apartments dot com. And then we started going down the list of owners who have their phone numbers attached to their property profile, which is available for real estate agents. So, but we did try to cast as wide as net. We thought shooting for a thousand was going to be enough based on, you know, the rental amount is a little bit over three thousand here in San Carlos. We figured that that was pretty much our target. We thought a twenty percent snapshot was more than enough to shore up.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question to the staff, but
Kristin, this is, this is Ellen. You're cutting in and out. I couldn't quite get what you were going to ask. Could you repeat that?
I think my Zoom is freezing. Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Yes, thank you. Oh, Kristin, I think you may have frozen. We cannot hear you. Any other questions while Kristin regroups with Zoom?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair Garbi. A couple for me, for Mr. Klein. Could you just remind us what project benefit in the beginning there was from getting, for bringing the BMR unit into the project?
The project received an additional unit for having a very low income.
Okay, great, great. And, you know, I don't think, well, I know I wasn't on the commission at the time. Can you just remind us what, like, the dialogue was with the city at the time? It's kind of like, hey, you know, we are committed to, well, what would the record say about the discussion about condo? Option for condo or absolutely not condo, we're in for apartments? Like, what, what was this?
Are you, are you talking about Wheeler Plaza?
No, no, for this unit, for this unit, at the time, when it was approved, there was, was there a discussion?
So we, Mr. Grove, whose hand is up now, if someone wants to let him in, purchased this property entitled. So it was, it was purchased as a property we built for apartments, but we condo mapped it on the, to give us flexibility in the market. You always want as much flexibility as you can get because the market does go through the various swings. So at the time, it was built as apartments and Mr. Grove could comment on this as well. What we've seen, especially in this building, is a constant turnover and a constant vacancy rate. Of the eight units that have been for rent, only two are original tenants. Six of the units have turned over. At one point, we had, there was a forty-plus percent vacancy rate approaching a sixty-six percent vacancy rate. We were able to sign a lease right before that other one left to prevent us hitting the sixty-six percent vacancy rate. But this building in particular has been tough to maintain winters. But we do know that there is a demand for condos. Two of the tenants who are not BMR tenants, but two of the tenants have indicated that they wish to purchase the condos that they're currently renting.
Good, thank you. I think the, maybe just a slightly different direction and I think you, Mr. Klein, Mr. Grove, both talked about willingness to have this BMR unit stay as a rental unit, I think. Great, great to hear that flexibility. Thank you. How would a building full of condo units and one apartment depending on, dependent on like a building manager? How would the person in that BMR unit, you know, make sure that everything was taken care of? And, you know, there, there's no drop-off in service or commitment? Like, what are your thoughts about how to balance those two?
Well, that, that's actually very easy to explain. As a director of a property management division, the condo would either be managed by Mr. Grove, the owner, or a property management company. And the tenant would be treated exactly the same as the tenant is treated now. The tenant is still held by all the same laws and requirements regarding an owner v. tenant. So nothing would change at all. The only thing that would change is maybe the owner would get less phone calls because he would have less tenants. But other than that, the tenant would be treated exactly the same. And every condo building has rental units and the tenants are always treated the way they'd be treated in any other situation.
Okay, good, thank you.
Go ahead, Kristin. How's your Zoom doing?
Yeah, it crashed on me, but I'm back. Sorry about that. I had a question for the city attorney. Greg is available, about how the density bonus law interacts with written contracts.
Well, in this case, I think.
I'm going to stop my, I'm going to turn off my camera so you can hear my question, but I actually have a specific question. So I know the use of the density bonus for a rental project. I looked up the state law and it does require fifty-five years of restricted affordability. Go on to the unit in return for the concessions that the developer requests. And so, and that isn't part of state law. So it's not something that San Carlos can override, in my understanding. But I wanted to understand, because our ordinance has the conversion, the three different considerations to think about when thinking about condo conversions, how does that interact with density bonus law? And also the fact that the, that the owner has signed a legal agreement already agreeing to to uphold all of the density bonus requirements?
I think that, well, in this particular case, the density bonus, there may have been a concession on top of it for the, for the number of units, I think was the concession here. And so the, the density bonus law is a law that deals with when someone proposes a development, if they, if they have an affordable unit, they get extra. And in this case, it was very low affordability. They, they received an extra unit over the density otherwise allowed at that location. The second aspect of it is the restrictive nature of the unit. And that's the, this unit, this building, right now, the entire building is burdened with the restriction for the, for the unit having, for fifty-five years, being a very low income unit. What I think the applicant is proposing is that the, that they be able to sell every other unit in the building and that the one unit, by a couple of different ways, would maintain its fifty-five-year protection. And usually, that part of that is one of the things that they're applying for tonight is a change to the, to the agreement that they've entered into that right now prohibits the conversion of the unit. So that's an essential element of what, what they're asking for here. And that is what we would be amending to, to create the fifty-five, to preserve. If the commission were to entertain the conversion, there would, we would need to negotiate and include in the, in the agreement that that aspect of the project be preserved for the time that they have originally promised and under the terms and conditions that they promised. And I think what staff is saying in the staff report is that has to remain, they, they prefer to make, to make it consistent with the findings you need to make. They could prefer that it be, remain a rental unit because of some of the difficulties we've experienced with very low-income units qualifying. So there is a way, the short answer is there is a way to preserve the affordability by putting a restricted covenant on that unit. It would become a condominium unit in the, in the building, but it would be subject to very stringent restrictions.
Right. And then, another question, the qualification that this should be in the best interest of the city. Has the applicant offered any other consideration to the city in return for the requested? I mean, I think the intention is, if I can express Mr. Klein's position, that there's very few for-sale units available to very low-income residents and that that itself is enough consideration, that the city should be happy about that. But is there, has there been any other offer kind of over and above the basic action and request?
Just to chime in, so our, our offer was not the BMR for-sale unit. That was just what we, the BMR is a very low-income unit. We're happy for it to sell. We're happy for it to stay as a rental. Our basis for saying that this is a benefit for the City of San Carlos is the City of San Carlos has very few starter homes, homes valued under a million dollars or less. As you can see from the list I showed on Zillow today, there's only a couple in the mid-nine hundreds. There's nothing below that until you get to vacant land. There's actually vacant land out for sale for one point four million. What we are saying is it's a benefit to the city for us to provide housing that's underneath the medium price for a, for a single-family home. Three of the units will be under eight hundred and fifty thousand or price for a, for a single-family home. Three of the units will be under eight hundred and fifty thousand or eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars or less. One will be in a six-hundred-thousand-dollar rental. We believe that's a benefit for the city of San Carlos. We also believe a full, I believe it's for the, in the benefit of San Carlos, especially in the downtown. We're trying to create a vibrant downtown. That is the purpose of a lot of these infill projects. It only works if the buildings are full. So that, no, the city has not asked for anything else, nor have we offered anything else. So it's never been a topic of discussion.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify with city staff or the attorney that the condo conversion ordinance does not include any relocation benefits to residents of the unit that houses the low-income or very low-income residents. Is that right?
I thought there was something in your, but maybe staff can.
And I want to, I want to express sympathy for the difficulty of the current market conditions while Greg is looking for that for staff. And I do, yeah, anyway, I guess the other parts are statements, so I'll save those. But I understand the application and understand and appreciate the, the different options that you've laid out.
Commissioner Clements, I'm foreseeing a question that's probably going to strike everyone as you debate based on the relocation expenses. The owner of the property has also said that he will not sell a unit until the tenant moves out on their own. He's not going to be in the process of noticing tenants and having them leave the building. He will do it through natural vacancy. So, just, just food for thought.
And if the answer, the answer to your question, Commissioner Clements, is at seventeen-point-four-eight-point-oh-three-oh. The there's some findings that need to be met under that section. I'm sorry, I read, I think I read the wrong one. Oh, three-oh-e. There's tenant protection and conversion projects. At the time, the subdivision submits the final map to the city council. He or she shall provide written evidence that each of the following tenant protection measures have been accomplished. And there's three of them. One is the tenants are given a hundred and twenty days' written notice of the intention to convert prior to termination of a tenancy. B, the tenants are given notice of exclusive right to contract for the purchase of their respective units on the same terms and conditions of the initial offer to the general public. And then three, relocation assistance. Pardon me? The third, can, can everyone hear me?
Yes, yes.
Relocation assistance in the form of information about available rental units at similar prices in the same general area. But that doesn't look like there's cash relocation assistance if that was the question. There are some state laws that may come into play that are in effect because of COVID-19 that, that would protect the tenants in this building, though.
Thank you very much.
This is Ellen. I'd like to jump in with a question for Mr. Klein, building on a previous comment that the, if the unit, the BMR unit remains a rental for fifty-five years, and I understand that you and/or your firm are the property managers on this, we have still fifty-plus years to go, and you probably won't be the property manager in fifty years. And I'm wondering, what is it like to hand off a one-off, you know, just a one-unit property manager? How do we have some assurance that property management for this one unit will continue for a half a century longer? I, I, if I was a property manager, and I'm not, I suppose I would be interested in managing a whole building, not one unit in a whole building. Can you help me understand that better, how that would work?
Yeah, absolutely, Chair Garvey. I, I hope when I'm eighty-eight, I'm still alive. But I definitely hope I'm not doing this anymore. So I totally agree with the premise of your question. There's a lot of one-off property managers. It's, so you, the unit, when Sequoia Realty Services is no longer associated with the building, the unit will go one of two ways. There's obviously going to be an HOA management company who will be involved to run the CCNRs, HOA meetings, dues, all of that stuff that goes along with being a condo building. A lot of those HOA units are set up to handle one-off rentals. It's a way for them to subsidize their income. If not, there are a lot of small, I don't want to say small, I don't want to make it seem, it's all the small property, property managers. We have a property manager who we partner with specifically when we get smaller units that don't really seem within our niche. Larger buildings tend to be more of what we do, but there are many property managers who manage only in single-family homes and condos. There's a good living in that. Have a lot of properties, but there's definitely plenty who do that. In terms of service, as you know, California is an incredibly litigious state. We like to say we give a good service because that's what we want to do. We're also required to give good service. So there are a lot of requirements, especially when you get into affordable housing that property managers have to be aware of. There are definitely pitfalls if you're not paying attention because you have to show that you're not discriminating. And if you're giving a very low-income BMR unit bad service, you could be accused of discrimination. So I, I would not worry one bit about the level of service that this BMR unit will, will get in the future.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff or the applicant's team before we see if there's anyone in the waiting room from the public who'd like to comment?
Chair Garvey, I do have another question for staff. Hopefully, it's not too detailed. I think this might be of Adam. So when you determine the price for the very low-income sales unit, can you tell me what components go into that calculation? I don't need the number replicated. I'm just trying to figure out if there's, for instance, maintenance and repair kind of reserve part of, as part of that calculation?
Yeah, so we don't include a maintenance or repair reserve line item in that calculation. We do include an estimation for HOA fees, utilities, PMI, property tax, most of the usual fees you would encounter. And then we typically, for BMR units, assume a ten percent down payment and whatever the prevailing interest rate at the time. So I think right now we used around three-point-one for this calculation.
Do you use a year fixed rate?
Yes, thirty-year fixed rate.
We saw Freddie Mac thirty-year fixed in December, I think, was two-point-eight-five. Unbelievable. Lowest in history. Thank you.
Just one final question for, for Mr. Klein. If, does the rental, the BMR rental unit currently have a parking space? If all the other units are converted to condos and some of those people want more parking spaces than they're currently allocated, can the parking space for the BMR unit be subsumed or taken over by anybody else? I'm just wondering.
Easy question, Chair Garvey. With the BMR ordinance in town, the BMR unit is required, this BMR unit is required to have a parking space. It's deeded with the unit. They can't be separated. So, yeah, no, no matter what, it will always have a parking space.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff or the applicant's team before we see if there's anyone in the waiting room? All right, Sarah, is there anyone in the waiting room who wishes to speak? And if you have been listening, this is a good time to call in. There's some call-in numbers on the screen. Please, Sarah, anyone in the waiting room?
Yes, it looks like we have six. So first, we'll start off with Bella.
All right, Bella and subsequent callers, please give us your full name. You'll have two minutes to address the commission. Welcome, Bella.
Hello, sorry, it's not Bella. I borrowed someone else's iPad. My name's Natalie Coy. I'm the tenant for the BMR unit at nine-seven-seven Laurel currently. And I just wanted to say that I know that Adam had said that it's usually not possible for the very low tenant, I mean, people to, income people to qualify to buy BMRs at that rate. So I don't know if I'd qualify, but if I could, it would be great because everybody, of course, would rather own a property over renting. But if I couldn't, then I would love to be able to still rent and not have to find another place to live because I'd probably be pretty hard. I was already felt very blessed to be able to qualify for this place and find it. But I just wanted to give my opinion on that. If I could try buying it and if not, then still rent it, or if you guys decide to convert, or if it would only be one or the other. So I, I guess that was all I had to say.
All right. Thank you very much for those comments. Sarah, the next caller.
Laura. Hi, good evening, planning commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. My name is Laura Tuchel. I am a lifelong resident of San Carlos and I live at seven-seventy-five Chestnut Street. And tonight I wanted to speak in support of the condo conversion proposed at nine-seventy-seven Laurel. I think this condo conversion comes at the right time. Rental housing vacancies do continue to increase. And we know that San Carlos is in dire need of opportunities for first-time homebuyers, as Andy Klein pointed out. With three of the units at nine-seventy-seven Laurel listed below market, a vote for condo conversion really is a vote for filling a very real need for starter homes in our community. So I hope you'll consider approval and thanks very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Laura. Sarah, next caller.
Greg Garcia.
Yes, this is Greg Garcia. Can you hear me?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So I'm Greg Garcia. I'm a real estate broker at Square Realty. And I've been the tenant placement person for this property since completion a couple of years ago. And ever since, everybody that comes through, time and time again, asks if there's any way they could buy one of the units. Big demand for people looking for more boutiques, smaller buildings in the area. And this, you know, this property, you know, definitely is appealing to them. So definitely love to say, you know, that, that yes, we could sell them. I prefer to see, you know, that whole building, you know, completely occupied than having the two, three-month vacancies. And I think it would be beneficial for the, for the economy of San Carlos as well, you know, having that thing completely full with people out, you know, patronizing in the restaurants and everything close by. So yeah, I'm totally in favor. I think it would be, I think it'd be wise to, to convert this over to condos. Thank you.
Greg, thank you very much. Sarah, next caller.
Brian Jacobs.
Yes, good evening. Confirming everybody can hear me as well?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Brian Jacobs and I'm a longtime San Carlos property owner here to express my support for the condo conversion at nine-seventy-seven Laurel. A couple of quick notes. One is, I, I just want to throw out there, my understanding is that the property is mixed-use. And so to the property manager question, any of that commercial space would be professionally managed anyway. So I think that the management issue wouldn't be a problem because it's going to be managed anyway. So that was just a side note, my observation from looking at the project with mixed-use. But what I'm looking at and hearing is that it seems like the request is checking all the boxes for compliance. The one that may be in question is whether it's in the best interest of the city. And I, my strong belief is that I would rather see a affordable ownership rather than luxury rentals. We have plenty of luxury rentals out there and the people who are doing those luxury rentals are not typically long-term tenants because the rents are so high in these luxury rentals. We're in affordable ownership. What Mr. Klein was talking about in terms of those price points, those are price points that are unheard of to get into San Carlos. And that's really what we want to see is that long-term affordable ownership. So I, I don't see any negative impact on the rental market in San Carlos and would rather see those affordable ownership units. Thank you for your time.
Brian, thank you very much. Sarah, next caller.
Sorry, hold on one moment. Alicia Nardine.
Yes, hi, Planning Commissioner. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Alicia Nardine and I live at fourteen-thirty-five Eaton in San Carlos. I'm also a local realtor who sells homes on the Mid Peninsula and also leases many of apartments in the San Carlos and Redwood City area. I saw in the staff report that the city staff is stating that the vacancy rate in San Carlos has stated a pre-pandemic rate of three-point-one percent. I can tell you firsthand, I wish that that was true, but I know for a fact that it is not. Since the late spring, the rental market has been getting worse and worse in San Carlos. Rental rates have dropped by more than ten percent on many properties. And rental units are sitting on the market with no tenants to fill them. Before the pandemic, I would be, it would be normal for me to rent a property in one to two weeks. Now they are sitting on the market for two to three months. We have, in addition to dropping the prices, we have to offer them free rent, lower deposits, anything to just get them in the door. And even at that, they are still not signing leases and not moving forward because they know that those apartments will still be available in the months to come. Our local landlords are all competing for tenants and because they have the time to shop, they know that everything will be on the markets for weeks to come. Staff should drive around and talk and talk to your local realtors and talk to those landlords that are leasing because it's quite a bit of a challenge now, and I know that firsthand. I think that if they reevaluated the statistics, they would recognize the vacancy rate and base and does not reflect what the current market is right now. This is worse than I've ever seen it in twenty years of selling real estate. The prices are dramatically lower and the, there are such high vacancies that, you know, things are sitting on the market for much longer than normal. So I would like the Planning Commission to make the logical conclusion that the vacancy rate of three-point-one percent is not accurate.
Alicia, thank you very much. Sarah, next caller.
James.
Okay, hello?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Okay. First time on Zoom here, so bear with me. Anyway, James Melcher, I own property at seven-nine-six El Camino, have for thirty-five years. Also, I have some residential units, a handful. And without a doubt, vacancy rates are going up on rental units. And residential especially, I mean, not especially, but in addition to. And also at seven-nine-six El Camino, I'll be at forty-five percent vacant in just a few months. So, that being said, is homeownership in general better for the city of San Carlos as opposed to rental, rental agreement, rental tenants? I believe homeownership is better, just in general. Homeowners take more, better care of their property. And I also believe that it leads to a better sense of community rather than having tenants come and go, especially in these high Class A apartments which seem to have much higher turnover. I'd like to see that building full and so those people could come down the street and accommodate my commercial building down the street. So that's all I have to say and I'm supportive of the project.
James, thank you very much. Sarah, next caller.
Christina Dickerson.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Christina Dickerson and I am actually one of the tenants in the building at 977 Laurel. And also one of the people interested, oh, wouldn't you have it, forgive my phone for ringing. One of the people interested in buying my unit. I moved to from 16 years in Palo Alto and I'm at the other end of my spectrum, not in a starter, but looking to downsize and live in a community that I value the people and the city and the vibrancy of the downtown. I'm a city girl. I grew up on the East Coast and in Chicago. And I loved coming back here for that sense of community, being able to walk down the street to get everything I want. Proximity to the airport, proximity to the city where my son lives. I love this building. I love the feel of the building and I, I, I buying this place will allow me to stay in San Carlos because that's what I'd like to do. I want to talk especially to the best interest for the community and I agree with the public speakers and of course with, with all the eloquence in, that Andy Klein spoke with earlier, that, that you're going to have a turnkey of people coming in and out if you're a rental in this kind of building. Versus if you allow people to buy, they'll, they'll plant their feet and become, you know, really contributing members to the community. And so I'm in very much support of you moving to, condoing out this building. Thank you for your time and appreciate all that you do for the city and, and our county.
Thank you, Christina. Sarah, are there any other callers?
Andrew.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Andrew Viviani. I'm a San Carlos resident and my wife and I own a hair salon on the 700 block of Laurel Street. And I'd just like to show my support for this project. Our kids are grown and, you know, they're, they're off to college and my wife and I would love to, love to purchase something like this downtown and live closer to, to our hair salon and be able to walk, you know, to work. So I just wanted to give my support for the project.
Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean to.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sarah, are there any other callers in the waiting room?
Caller ending in 716.
Caller 716, we cannot hear you. Maybe you are muted on your phone?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. Yes, please give us your name and begin speaking.
Yes, my name is Michael. I've got people that have a place down the street from the 977 Laurel business that you just spoke of. And that original building, I'm surprised you guys didn't go back and look at the minutes when the original concept was, project was put down there. That was apartments, below market rate apartments that a lot of really nice people lived in. They were basically run out of town, giving no moving expenses and nothing other than just go. When this building was built, I talked to the contractor, I talked to some of the workers. The plan was always to convert it into a condo. And so I really don't understand the people in the Planning Commission not understanding that most of these callers that have called in is a complete setup, okay? It's all friends. And it's just like greasing the wheels of the politics here in town. They got an extra unit put in that building for building that below market rate. And when they first tried to rent the upstairs unit, which is called the penthouse, which is the three bedroom unit, they're trying to get $11,000 a month. And the reason that that building has had so many vacancies for so much time is because they charge, they're just charging more than they can possibly want. So because we're in this pandemic and there's all sorts of protections for these people that are in the pandemic as far as rentals go, they just want to get out of it. They just want to get the money. And what I don't understand is the representative, he's sitting there saying that they're going to sell for this amount and they're going to sell for that amount, 600,000, 900,000. Then nobody knows how much they're going to sell for. They could sell for a million and a half. It just depends on how much the bidder bids. So I just don't see it's even possible that anyone with a logical mind would actually allow this thing to be converted. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Michael, thank you very much. Sarah, are there any other callers?
Yes, there's one more.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Very good. My name is JD Andagnostu. I'm owner of two seven-unit apartment buildings, Class C, but remodeled. And I just want to say I've been doing that for over 30 years. And this is the worst I've ever seen it. I have two vacancies in each building and it's been Craigslist, Apartments.com, Zillow.com, putting ads for those particular places, lowering the rent. And I would have to say I'm not getting the kind of phone calls I used to get, if any at all. So I just wanted to attest to the vacancy rate. I know it's not San Carlos, but it is a good location in Redwood City and the phone is not ringing. So I just wanted to, you know, basically ascertain the fact that two out of seven for each building is greater than 10%. So thank you very much and I hope we are also in the real estate business and I hope we do have more affordable units to occupy. It's certainly a, a better way, a longer lasting and with the, the apartments, there's always enough of those properties in any type of marketplace. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you JD. Sarah, any other callers?
Chair Garvey, the applicant Grove would like to speak again.
Yes, Mr. Grove, you may, you may speak again. You'll also have two minutes, but hopefully that's not a problem. We can't hear you. You might be on mute.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Please, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say for the record, I purchased that building already approved and complete and wasn't a party to any of the negotiations through that whole deal. I bought it after the fact. The guy who, who put it up for sale, realized what it was going to cost him to build and realized he couldn't do it and it didn't make sense. I purchased the building because I'm a builder and, and can build them at a little better rate than what the average guy that has to sell them out can do. Even with me building them and I've got a few couple other projects going in your city, costs are over the top. So the last gentleman that was talking about making all this money, I wish he could come sit down and look at my expense account because it's, it's not, you're not making any money on these projects right now. You just aren't. And the only reason you would do a BMR or build these projects is because the BMR gives you that extra bonus unit. Even though that building, like, like the city said, is worth 135,000, for that 550-foot building for me to build cost me about 300,000 bucks and that's not including the fees for the city. So, so the guy who talked before really didn't know what he was talking about as far as fees go. And like I said, I didn't have anything to do with the negotiating. So the poor people that were there prior, I feel bad for them, but I know nothing about it.
Mr. Grove, thank you for that clarification. Sarah, is there anyone else in the waiting room who'd like to speak on this item?
Not at this time.
All right, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Ball moved.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Lisa, roll call. Lisa, you might be on mute.
Thank you. Yes, I had just had to scroll over to unmute myself. Commissioner Yonka Pony?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ruth?
Yes.
And Chair Garvey?
Yes. All right, we've heard from staff, we've heard from the applicant and we've heard from many members of the public. I'll now open the meeting up for discussion amongst ourselves. Who would like to start?
Well, I'll start off by saying I've lived in San Carlos for 37 years now in two different condos. Of course, we're up at Crestview. My first one was at Britton and Crestview. And 15 years ago, I liked San Carlos so much, I moved to another condo one mile north at Club Drive and Crestview. And amazing, we watched the units we're in. When I lived at Britton, we watched these being built. So they're all about 30 or 40 years old now roughly. There's, there's five, there's over a thousand units up here with different homeowner associations, of course, some small ones and some huge ones. And they don't, people buy them now. My other one I bought for 139,000 and sold it for 600 and something 10 years or 15 years later, I guess. 20 years, 22 years later. This one I've been in for 15 years. And we get cards from Realtors about what they're selling for and they're all, the one, the smaller ones and older ones are like a million and a half and I haven't seen any go for 2 million yet, but they're about a 1.8, 1.9. And it's a nice place to live. People like it. Most of them are well-managed. Landscaping's done and when your roof leaks, they'll fix it for you and you don't have to worry about it. But not everybody likes condo living and it's got its disadvantages, but whether it's in a downtown area or up here, we're on the edge of the open space with a beautiful view of the bay. It's, I'm blessed to live here and I've lived all over the country. So I'm in favor of converting these eight units. Thank you.
Well, I guess I could go next. I have to say, I'm somewhat on the fence about this. I think we've heard quite a bit of detail about the opportunity that having them be condos gives to the community. And I'm also sensitive to to the rights of a property owner to, to try to make that happen, to realize the maximum value that you can from the property, which this conversion would certainly result in to the owners. So that, that, that's weighs quite strongly in my mind. The, the part that I kind of want to bounce around a little maybe with my fellow commissioners is the, the other side of it, which is the need for rental, rental units in our community in order to have a, a balanced, a balanced housing stock and a, and a healthy, healthy economy. And it's, it's tough right now in, to, given our, the pandemic conditions. I think there's a very strong distortion of the market where a lot of the people who would ordinarily be renting are the ones in the service industries. They do not have a work from home option. And so there's really nothing to, to keep them in the, as long as the restaurants and the shops are, are operating at, at minimal capacity, there's not much to keep, to keep them in the area. So they're gone. And so, so we certainly see that impact during this temporary COVID conditions. But in the longer run, having some housing stock for, for renters and for the service, for people in the service industry would be a, it's certainly something that's valuable to the community. And so this decision could impact that in a negative way, in that we'd be reducing the rental and the opportunity to those people. So the, and when we say that it's, I don't, I don't agree with the argument that, oh, losing seven rental units isn't significant in terms of the, the large number of total units in the community, but then to turn around and say that having seven condos is significant. I think we kind of have to look at it from a, from a more principled view of what do we need in the community in terms of the community benefit? I guess the, the second area of my concern is on the, on the survey, whether it's appropriate to kind of take a somewhat of a blip, at least a blip on the time scale that this decision will impact. I mean, so the, those units will be condos for, the building has a lifespan of another 50 or more years. And so to make the decision based on a, on a one-year blip, we all agree that the rental market was very tight just a year ago. It was, it was extremely hard for people to get a, to get a unit then. True, none of us know the future, but is a pretty short-term window to be looking at for the occupancy rate and to be deciding that, that, that that it's appropriate to to count a survey taken in the middle of the, of the, of the pandemic. I also a little worried about the kind of survey that was offered by the applicant in that the, I'm not convinced that there wasn't sort of a selection bias in the units that were surveyed. If you're looking on, on Zillow for buildings to survey, they obviously are going to have vacant units or they wouldn't be there. The ones that are, the ones that are full may be the invisible ones that wouldn't be surveyed. So the methodology of the survey of like sort of, without having, having that be done according to, I don't know, good practices, standard practices, it makes me somewhat skeptical of the number, although I, I do think the the, the vacancy rate is quite high at the moment, but, but but that may be just quite transitory. And as far as setting precedent, I, I agree with the applicant that, you know, we don't make our decisions on this case based on, on setting a precedent. We make the decision based on the merits of this, of this particular case. But that doesn't mean that we don't think of it in terms of, of how our decision impacts the city on a larger scale. And what, and doing what's right for the city in terms of, of what's a in the best interest of our community. So I guess I'm, I'm still somewhat on the fence. I'm interested to hear, hear additional perspectives from the other commissioners before I, before I make my decision.
Building on some of those comments, Vice Chair Ruth, I, I agree that the, when I saw that slide that staff put up that showed how many fewer rental units versus condos we have versus every single other city that was surveyed, I realized just how important it is for us as a city, I believe, to try to retain as much rental stock as we can. as much rental stock as we can. And the decision to convert is, is a permanent one. It, it, there's no backtracking on it. And this is somewhat concerning to me. I agree with your point on having a balance between rental choices and purchase options. The other thing that I'm, I'm trying to put, while we, while we decide this on its, on its own merits, I'm also thinking more holistically about the city and where we are with housing. And we are in the middle of a focused general plan update. And one of those elements is the housing element. And my guess is that from that review, in the next six months, we will learn a lot more about the current housing situation and possibly developing new policies around rental and housing and other types of, of housing. And I don't fully understand how this decision impacts those new policies, but I think we need to be mindful that there could be some changes coming in policy in the next three to six months. And I don't know how those would impact a decision with us tonight. I'm just putting that out there as a, as sort of a point of awareness.
I can go next. I have quite a few thoughts, and I appreciate the chairs and the vice chairs' thoughtful comments. It looks like the city's ordinance that's on the books today lets us think about, you know, broadly the best interest of the city and the apartment supply as two of the three. And I read that, and I read that as, that we get to think about all of them. So that even if, even if we say that today's vacancy rates are, or the survey itself, given who responded or the numbers, you know, even if we don't think that that has all the commanding validity of this decision, the other two elements that we get to think about still would drive us to really consider carefully how, how we let people through the, the condo conversion ordinance. You know, a lot of buildings are built to condo specs so that they do have this option later. And I'm very sympathetic with Class A rental owners at this time, and we also heard from a Class C property nearby. Also, of course, with small properties, very easy to have higher vacancy rates. You know, it's a challenging rental market right now. That being said, real estate is very cyclical, and people who are in this business, sometimes real estate sales are great, sometimes they're not, sometimes rents are great, sometimes they're soft. And, you know, you have to have strong resolve among, and bravery, really, to be a real estate owner or developer. I wanted to add a little bit of data that I have been researching and know about from the South Bay, but really this broader market in general. While we were talking, I looked up an article, the current vacancy rate overall estimated in San Mateo County broadly right now is, this is fourteen percent. Well, prices have dipped fourteen percent, which I agree that today's Class A vacancy rate is well above five percent all throughout the peninsula and the South Bay. In San Jose, where I work, we subscribe to CoStar. It's not cheap, but it does give you good data about your jurisdiction. And right now, the Class A vacancy rate in San Jose is sixteen percent. And the Class B, C, and F vacancy rates are just above five. They're actually at six and change for the first time in twenty, twenty-ish years for some of those classes. Generally, the demand is very strong at the lower, lower rents or moderate rents range. And I was also interested, just if you guys are interested in data like I am, the average over the last twenty years, the vacancy rate for Class A apartments in San Jose was nine percent. It is structurally a more volatile part of the market than kind of more moderated and lower rents are. And that is typical through our Silicon Valley ups and downs. So anyway, thinking back to the other two factors is perhaps more compelling than to think about. I completely agree with the chair's assessment that our, it looks like our apartment sector is really small compared to other neighboring jurisdictions, even Belmont, which I think is a very good comparison. We know Redwood City's been building a lot, but. And, and yet, you know, the idea of lower-priced entry-level condominiums, very hard to get, right? But without some kind of restriction, it is not knowable what prices anything but the very low-income unit would, would command. So I agree with the caller that unless there is some kind of stop on the price, of course, the price will be what the price will be. The market dictates the price. So, so what the proposal is, is to have either a, a very low-income rental unit or a very low-income for-sale unit. If I were trying to buy today, I would absolutely want the chance to, to buy something less expensive than the rest of the market because San Carlos is a great place to be, and those of us who live here are lucky to live here. That said, getting a very low-income rental unit that's affordable for fifty-five years is extremely hard to come by as well. And I think because of our rental undersupply, we just don't, we, we don't have the luxury of not being thoughtful about condo conversions. I do think more condo conversions will be coming. I think the city should think through the ordinance. I know that it seemed like staff had a very reasonable response, which is, we'll have to look at this, you know, given the data, and we'll have to figure it out. Because it has not been a thing in a lot of markets, but it may be more of a phenomenon. So we have to be thoughtful about how we approach this. And then I'll say one other thing, which is I've overseen asset management affordability compliance work for a portfolio for a city before, for several years. And we have found that those property managers that have very small properties and are trying to administer a couple of units of affordability really difficult over time, I think, to the chair's question, which is what does that property management look like? It is very hard to get those, those units to report properly and to comply properly, in my experience. It is much better with large numbers of professionally managed property manage, units where property managers have gone through training specifically for affordable housing, property management. And that, and it's just really hard to come by when it's only a unit here and a unit there. So from a management perspective and a reliability perspective, I do not think that that is a, an attractive prospect to have one rental unit. I give the city or whomever kudos for even trying to administer a program like that. So, so with all of those things in mind, I think we need to support the rental stock. I think the findings that staff looked into other than the vacancy rate were made clearly and that, that that would dictate a rejection of the application. Thank you.
Chair Garvey, a few thoughts from me and colleagues. So I, I think first, I, a couple of, a couple of you said what's first on top of my mind. I think the whether or not the current environment has a low or high occupancy rate is kind of a, a near-term issue in my mind. I, I am actually troubled by the relative rental versus ownership housing stock here in San Carlos. And I just think, you know, for people who are unable to get that down payment together for a, a higher-value purchase, you know, it remains a real problem. And, and by the way, I'm not at all deft to the applicant's point that these are set up as luxury units, and they will be well above the, the market. Even if their prices were to come down, they'll still be above the average of the market. So, you know, it's, on the one hand, maybe preserving these units is good. And if they're not filled because they'll be above average, then I don't actually know that it accomplishes where I'm going with this, which is I really want more apartments. So I'm reluctant to give them up, and I'm reluctant to take a decision that lasts forever in what is a twelve- or eighteenth- or a twenty-four-month flip. I think you all have made, made that point. What I, what I will say, I am very clear on is I am not supportive of converting the BMR unit to a for-sale unit. And so, you know, any, if, if we were to arrive at a, a path forward that carved it out and kept it as a rental unit, then that would be the, the first personal requirement in good conscience to take a step in this direction toward the applicant's request. So then what does that do for me? It kind of brings me all the way back to, to believe that this is better for the city of San Carlos. I, comes down to that great question that has been posed, which is, you know, is it better to have seven luxury apartments, four of which are filled and three of which are not? Or is it better to have seven filled condos and four or five of them go at a pretty reasonable rate compared to the other units in the city? And, you know, I, I think the point about what will those prices be is, is unknown. And I, I know that the applicant was saying, well, gee, they're going to go for six hundred thousand or nine hundred thousand dollars. And, and I'm not sure why that would be true. Because I think there is going to be upside of the market and upside to ownership, and people will, with funds, will see a good deal and go buy it. So what, what does that all say? I think I'm on the fence about the other seven. I think my bias is to keep them as apartments. And I'm very clear on the one BMR unit that it should stay as, as an apartment. So I'm going to pause. Thanks.
I, I like the idea. I too feel strongly that the BMR unit should not be a converted unit. I, I still think there are management questions going on if it's just the only rental unit for the next fifty years. I hear Commissioner Clements' comments on that. I, I agree with her on that. Those are good points. And I look at these numbers that we're, how far out of balance we are with our rental stock versus our condos. And I think we need to keep all these units as rentals. We, when you don't have very much, seven becomes a bigger number. So for me, I'm just sort of moving off the fence a little to think that I, I would prefer to keep all of these as rental units. Recognizing that at some point in the future, a year or two down the line, we have our focus plan update. We've got some new housing policies in place. The pandemic may be over. We can reassess things further down the line. But as of today, those are my feelings.
I wanted to share the data that I think I saw is that we are twenty-seven percent rental stock, and the pipeline has twenty percent of new units. So we're not even keeping up with the current percentage of rental stock that we've got in the current pipeline. We're actually lower than usual on the rental proposals. I, I have to say one more thing, which is I totally agree with one of the commissioners' comments, which is it's, you know, whether there's a very low-income rental unit or a very low-income ownership unit, it is hard for people at very low-income levels of salary to get the credit scores, to get the down payment. That is, so that will be large in order to buy. And what, what studies have found is that homeownership programs that target frankly, lower-than-low-income residents, and that's true in lower-income markets, too. And we usually, only in the Bay Area, tend to help people between low and moderate income at the most to buy. Is that it is easier to fall out of ownership because there's just not enough cash after you pay your mortgage a lot of times to deal with things like a rising HOA, in case of a condo, or unexpected repairs, in case of not a condo. So I, I find it very difficult to support VLI ownership programs in general. Not that it wouldn't be great to figure that out. It'd have to be on community land, community-owned land with a bifurcated structure like Habitat for Humanity does. That could work. But it's difficult other than that.
One thing that resonated for me in the comments I've heard in, in the value of the rental of the apartments to the community is, is fairly strong. And when this building was first approved, it was in that context, and that's, and that there was some horse trading going on. And, and the package that was approved was for apartments that would be rented. And we were, and at the time, commissioners were, were comfortable with that whole package, including the below-market unit as part of that, but you can't, you have to take the whole thing as a whole. And now with the conversion to condos, I don't know that the community is getting a lot of value back from that. We're, we're, so what are we getting, you know, what are we getting for that? I mean, the deal was made, all the parties agreed. The current, the, the current applicant bought it knowing that it was apartments. And so if we're going to let go of the value, I would want to see some assurance that it's not just, you know, a cash out, you know, just benefiting the, the applicant while being a detriment to the community. So that's a that was my additional thought.
Good thought. And I'll also add that the the real estate articles that I have been reading and including consultants that we have working for, I work in the city of San Jose on real estate-related issues. The consultants that we've got working, it is a hard time to estimate rents and to look forward for rents. It truly is. But we also, I, I just pulled up an article in San Mateo with Apartment List's chief economist saying, it seems like perhaps the, the trough of Class A rents is here, and that it's going to start going back up as people start to return to work hybrid. People will no longer be able to work remotely. You know, the, a lot of the, the data suggests that the numbers of searches for short-term leases in, from the Bay, people in the Bay Area looking in other markets, it's for short-term leases. This is according to Apartments.com. We interviewed the chief economist a couple of months ago. And he said that those short-term lease searches were up thirty to forty percent over normal for folks who are knowledge economy workers, working in high-cost markets, just like in the peninsula and the South Bay, places like Seattle and Boston, Washington DC. Because they have those jobs where they can work remotely, they may move to a cheaper location for a short time. But then they should be moving back. They have not, folks, there wasn't an indication that people were They have not folks, there wasn't an indication that people were leaving and leaving for good. And so all the intelligence that I see supports the idea that if the underlying economy is robust, that rents will come back. The commercial rents are coming back. And we know how many new square foot uh square feet of businesses we have coming in. Close to one oh one, so I I don't think that this trough in rents is going to last forever. Easy for me to say it's not my money, so I'm sympathetic to property owners. But uh but I do think that long term, we need more apartments here. And I and I agree that there's been no case made why this is the best case for the city to do this conversion.
Maybe if I could just uh let me be then uh be a little clearer on a position and see if it's a rallying point or not either way. I I think that we've been asked to make a couple of findings. And for my part, the finding around is there um below or above the threshold of vacancy? I I think there's enough evidence to say vacancies at the current time are up and therefore. And willing to say, yep, okay. Tick the the finding on there are vacancies that warrant uh the space for this request. And with the caveat that this is an unusual time. I I think that for me, the difficult one remains is this decision, which I'm very aware that is of. It is a five decade decision is in the best interest of the city of San Carlos. And it is not clear, and therefore, if it's not clear, it's kind of like instant replay. You know, there I wouldn't overturn it. So therefore, I I'm gonna propose for my part. Since it is not clear that this decision is in the best interest of the city, that I have to vote to deny. And I would do so, and I we've used this phrase in past, I would do so without prejudice. Because you you know, to the the point. That a couple of you have made in twelve months will find that the economy is fundamentally changed. Um and the housing requirements are quite different or that pressure rebuilds. And we're back in the exact same position of really wanting wishing we'd had these apartments, so. Therefore, I would want the applicant to know they, you know, they could come back and ask again.
What Commissioner Yakapony has proposed is something um I would support. I agree, we are in the middle of a pandemic. It is a very strange year from a labor market perspective, from a housing perspective, from a financial perspective. Uh and I don't know what the best thing for the city is in the middle of a pandemic. I don't know if it's this decision or not. Um and I would agree since I don't really know because it's such a strange year. That I I would not support this also without prejudice that in a year or two, when the pandemic is over. And the general plan policies have been adopted by this by the city council and put in place, certainly we can revisit this.
I've just to through the chair, I'm commissioned. I I was just gonna say that um you're there, there's no motion pending right now um to to um adopt a resolution. So you might want to put before you on on the floor a a motion and then hit a second and then talk about that motion.
Thank you, Greg. Excellent comment. There you go. Jim, would you would you like to uh read this and uh see if this is what you were wanting or? Were you planning or or I'm just reading through this to see if this is similar to what you were wanting.
Yeah, I'm sorry, uh Ellen, I think Don was trying to come on in with a point um and would welcome his voice first.
I can support Jim and Ellen's and and Kristen's too.
Thank you, Don. So I I think the the motion that's on the screen says um that that we would. Deny the conditional use permit, and that's where I am. So assuming that this says what I says, then I said, then I would put this motion forward. That I move that the planning commission adopt the resolution made by staff. And deny the conditional use permit and the amendment to the below market rate housing plan. For the conversion of an eight unit mixed use development located at nine seven seven Laurel, APN oh five one, three five eight two seven oh. Based on the findings and the reasons incorporated in the staff report.
And I will second that. Any discussion on the motion before we ask staff for a roll call? Hearing none, now Lisa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roof?
Yes.
And Chair Garvey?
Yes.
Uh Lisa, um is is this, um I think this is probably an appealable decision since it's a use permit. We might want to announce that procedure.
Uh thank you, Greg, for that. Lisa, I don't have that procedure in front of me to read. Do you or um staff have that to read onto the record?
I'd like to ask Lisa to verify, but I would normally say with a conditional use permit that yes, it's an appealable um to the city council. However, if Lisa Costa Sanders can confirm that in the context of this particular application.
Yes, the planning commission decision is appealable to city council.
And is there a time phrase uh timeframe, Lisa Costa Sanders?
It's ten days. Correct, Lisa, or is it or is it a different timeframe?
It's our standard appeal process, yes, ten days from the date of the decision.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Greg. All right, moving on to the next agenda item, reports, correspondence and general information. Uh Lisa Porres, any report on recent city council actions?
Uh it's been a while. Um I guess I could even say Happy New Year, since this was our first meeting of twenty twenty one. That's a little dated already, correct? I don't believe we have anything relevant in terms of city council actions to report. I know that Al Seve is on the line, so if I've forgotten anything, Al, please feel free to jump in. But otherwise, um nothing for this evening.
All right, I'm moving on to planning commission comments and or reports. Do any of my commissioners have any comments or or reports? Uh I have one.
I have uh, excuse me, uh Chair Garvey, I have one comment. In the agenda pack, there was um a a s- a study, I I think a current conditions report. I'll probably get the title wrong. It was well done, and I'm wondering, uh can the planning commission members uh request a hard copy of that?
Absolutely.
If we ask for one, can we get one?
Absolutely, Commissioner Yakapony. I believe what you might be referring referring to is the existing conditions atlas report. So I'll coordinate with Lori and then when we have those available um for the commission to pick up. And I'll I'll go ahead and print um several copies of those with the understanding that it's kind of nice to have. It's kind of a large report. We'll make accommodations for you to pick those up at city hall, or we can put them in the mail for you, but we can definitely accommodate that.
Thank you.
Good suggestion. I would like one of those. I really liked that document. It was easy to read and um well done. I had one um workshop. I had attended the Zoom workshop for the general plan focused update for the housing element and environmental safety. That took place on January twentieth, twenty twenty one. It was well attended. I really liked the way it was run. Uh I I'm really glad that I attended. Moving on to correspondence, Lisa, anything to report? Lisa, you're on mute.
Long button. Um no correspondence to share this evening. And I can certainly move on to agenda item D if there's no questions.
Yes, please.
Um sure. So I would just like to let the commission know that we do have a meeting uh for um for the for the second meeting in March, which will be on March fifteenth. And on that meeting, um we have two items on the agenda. One will be um an informational item on the housing element annual progress report. So some of you are familiar with that, but it generally is a report for the calendar year of twenty twenty. And this is a report that's required to be submitted to the State Department of Housing and Community Development every April and every year. So we report on all of the residential applications that we've received. What's been given a building permit and what has been given a certificate of occupancy or a final inspection. And we report on the various programs um within the housing element as well. So it's sort of like um just informational, it's the staff collecting the data. So we do want to share that with the planning commission before it goes to city council and then is sent to the state by April first this year. And then we have another application coming forward concerning um a tree removal permit that we will be bringing forward. And then aside from that, I'm just gonna go ahead and go to the next slide because I would like to make an announcement. As the commissioners uh may recall, one of the strategic objectives of the city council is to address um a long term. Plan um for the city's east side in response to the influx of development that's occurring. Across El Camino Real and the train tracks. This image up on the um upper right hand side of the slide here shows the steady area outlined in dark blue. Which uh we are referring to as it is East Side Innovation District area. And this is the area that is the subject of this project, which will ultimately have a vision plan uh by uh September of this year. That is our target date to finish this project. It's a very quick project, but because we have a lot of moving parts, we are um on the on the run with that. And we are having our first workshop on Wednesday, March the twenty fourth. Um the website for this project is called WWW dot San Carlos innovation dot org. You can find more about uh learn more about the project from that website. And you can also sign up um and register for this first workshop. So similar to what we're doing for the housing element update, um by having people register through Eventbrite. To be able to manage and plan for all the participants um who may be joining us. We're going to be doing that similar for this project. So we are asking people to register through Eventbrite. All of the information is up on the website. And um if you have any questions, you can feel feel free to reach out to me um regarding this project. And uh feel free to send this uh out to your neighbors, colleagues, business associates and et cetera. We want to make sure that everyone is aware and can participate in the conversation about this area of our city. So with that, uh I have no further comments this evening. Thank you.
All right, uh Lisa, thank you very much. And uh with that, uh this meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Night, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Night.
Welcome, Kristen.
Thank you very much.
Good job, Kristen.
Thank you. See you all in two weeks.
I get my second shot Saturday.
Oh, that's good.